Buenos Aires, Hafa Day, the Committee on Higher Education and the Advancement of Women, Youth, and Senior Citizens now convened this public hearing. In accordance with the open government law, notices were first sent to the media on Friday, November 20th, and again on Thursday, November 26th. For the record, today is Tuesday, December 1st, and the time now is 3:33 PM. The committee will hear and accept testimony, both oral and written, on the following. Bill Number 222-35COR, introduced by myself, by Speaker Talina Cruz Nelson, William M. Castro, and Joe S. Augustine. An act to add Section 4126 to Chapter 4 of Title 17 GCA, relative to the requirement of Guam Public High School seniors to fill out the free application for federal student aid, FAFSA, in order to provide more students with financial aid and provide more financial resources to the University of Guam and Guam Community College. And Bill Number 416-35COR, introduced by myself, Senator Joe S. Augustine, and Speaker Tina Rose Munya Barnes. An act to add a new Article 13 to Chapter 2 of Division 1 Title 10 Guam Code Annotated, relative to the establishment of the Senior Citizens Housing Task Force Act of 2020. I'd like to thank my colleague Senator Telo Titigui for joining me today. And I'd like to thank everyone from our educational institutions who are here. We have Superintendent John Fernandez, as well as Board Chair Maria Gutierrez from the Department of Education. We have President Mario Cotta from the Guam Community College, and President Thomas Christ from the University of Guam, as well as Mark A. Duarte. So, thank you very much, everyone, for joining us today. Bill Number 222-35, an act to add a new Section 4126 to Chapter 4 of Title 17 GCA, relative to the requirement of Guam Public High School seniors to fill out their free application for federal student aid, known as FAFSA, in order to provide more students with financial aid and provide more financial resources to the University of Guam and Guam Community College. Was introduced by myself with Vice Speaker Talina Cruz Nelson, William M. Castro, and Joe S. Augustine in October of last year. And we learned that several states throughout the United States made this a law, a new requirement for students graduating from high school to submit a free application for federal student aid in hopes of expanding access to financial assistance and encouraging an increase in college enrollment and completion. And it is the intention of the legislature to stimulate the academic development for our students and strengthen financial integrity for our post-secondary institutions by increasing the federal funds they receive through student aid. Now, for a background, the federal student aid application, the free application for federal student aid, is a totally optional application for students entering into the University of Guam and the Guam Community College. National college access groups say high school seniors leave millions of dollars in federal financial aid on the table by not completing the FAFSA form. Nationwide, eligible high school seniors missed out on $2.6 billion in federal Pell Grants because they did not fill out a FAFSA form. Greater FAFSA completion could lead to more financial aid for students and more financial resources for the University of Guam and the Guam Community College. So, I am very happy to have our stakeholders here, our education stakeholders here, to give testimony. I know we've also received testimony from students as well, that I will mention for the record after the oral testimonies today. And I know Superintendent Fernandez has requested to offer his testimony first, as he has another meeting, so I'd like to recognize you, Mr. Fernandez, please go ahead.
Thank you, Senator Shelton, and thank you, members of the committee. I really hate to do that, my question to go earlier, but I thank you for your indulgence, because I know that President Christ and Dr. Cotta, as well, have their tight schedules as well. But I'm going to go ahead and try to make this as brief as possible. I submitted my testimony, and I would do this with a caveat, in that I will say to you that I have not, and we have not, actually done what we usually do with, you know, a lot more opportunity and time, which is to reach out to our parents and students and also get their views on this. So, I do hope that the students did, you know, take the initiative to reach out to you as part of this public hearing to provide their views. But I did want to give you my perspective on Bill 222-35, again, which would make it a requirement for all Guam Public High School students to complete the FAFSA in order to graduate with a high school diploma. The intent of the legislation, as you mentioned, is to maximize the financial aid that students may receive to attend college, and also, as a result, increase financial resources for the University of Guam and the Guam Community College, should those students choose to attend college on Guam. I totally am in agreement with you and the other sponsors of the legislation, that completing and submitting the FAFSA would be a good thing for all students to do, as they explore their options for post-secondary education. Based on their recent GDOE surveys, affordability is among the top reasons students cite for not immediately pursuing a college education. It is a constant effort and partnership between GDOE and UOG and GCC to provide financial aid information to students interested in college, in order to ensure that they are aware that financial assistance is available to many of them through various sources, including federal government assistance. Otherwise, we do know that students may end up responding to this perceived challenge by foregoing the opportunity to even apply to post-secondary opportunities. I think, you know, with that, I mean that students see the big-ticket, you know, dollar amount that they might see on a brochure or in some of their research, and may immediately give up without even looking for financial aid opportunities. So, you know, having said this, I do want to say that establishing completion of the FAFSA as a graduation requirement should be done with caution and consideration. And this is not in any way to discourage this discussion. It really is a matter of just recognizing that any time we establish a graduation requirement, it is an important, you know, it is an important part of the journey to post-secondary opportunities, that you get your high school diploma. So, it is important that we ensure that the high school diploma is meaningful and reflects the requirements that we do deem important. Just over 10 years ago, GDOE's high school graduation rate was under 70%, and today we are graduating approximately 89% of our students. We recognize that graduation is simply the first step, among many other steps, needed to move forward to a productive, post-secondary experience. Adding more graduation requirements should always be done with care, just in order to ensure that obstacles to graduation are not unnecessarily placed before students who would otherwise have already met the academic and service learning requirements that currently exist. So, while I do agree with the intent of the legislation, I do think it's important to just ensure that we consider all students in all circumstances before making a final decision on such a requirement. In our discussion with students, and I think, Senator Shelton, you've been at some of these discussions with our students as well, where the FAFSA has come up. There are a number of challenges that have been cited with the FAFSA, as students work with counselors and other supporting partners to fill out these existing forms. And again, these challenges may not apply to all students, but they certainly present some questions relevant to equity. First of all, the FAFSA form is not a simple one. I mean, as you know, the first two pages, you know, by themselves, provide a lot of introductory information, expressed in words and terms, as someone with an advanced degree might have difficulty understanding at first glance. And I can certainly attest to that. Filled with many legal and financial terms, it's not an easy form to navigate, and for many students, especially those who might be challenged with English as a second language, or who might be potential first-generation college students, a significant amount of assistance is likely and understandably needed to support both the students and the parents when they encounter the FAFSA. Second, we know that students may run into difficulty in obtaining the necessary information from parents regarding taxes and income, especially if parents have failed to regularly file their taxes. So, this comes straight from some of the anecdotes that we hear from students. You know, in some cases, we've heard that parents have difficulty in receiving basic documentation from their employers, in order to fill out the information they need. In other cases, we hear from students who do not live with their parents, and are under the care of relatives, but who need to obtain the necessary information from parents who may be off-island or at other locations. Some students have indicated they have started the FAFSA forms, and the urging of counselors would simply give up when it comes to obtaining their parents' information. So, we know that parental involvement, support, and participation are all needed in order for students to meet this requirement. But we hear, you know, I guess anecdotally, that students seem to be able to deal with the information that they're required to provide, but when it comes to getting information from their parents, they run into an extra level of difficulty. That may not be any fault of their own, and so that's one of the concerns that I have when we ask the student to bear some of that burden of filling the FAFSA out to graduate, that some of the circumstances outside of their control, in some cases relative to their parents' ability to provide the information, may hinder them in filling out the application. And finally, what we learned is that household information, as you might guess, may be a particularly sensitive one for certain families, especially those under public assistance, where a violation of public housing requirements may threaten their continued assistance. So, students have expressed to us an unwillingness, in certain circumstances, by them or their parents, to fill out the household information requested, including numbers of people living in a household, or the number of children in a household. Again, students have indicated that this is a challenge that prevents them from being able to submit a completed FAFSA, and which sometimes just presents an obstacle to them, where they give up, instead of going through the entire process. The reason I wanted to raise these issues in particular, is that this is some of the discussion we've had, especially with those students who might be considered to be, you know, in need of extra assistance, you know, first-generation college, you know, college goers who want to go to college, but who don't have the support necessarily at home, or the ability to do all this without, you know, significant assistance. And I certainly want to make sure that before we make it a requirement, we think through what type of assistance is going to be needed, to ensure that those students do not get left behind in this type of an effort, and certainly do not have a further obstacle to completing their diploma, and making sure that they can move successfully on to their next steps. We know that access to technology has been an issue that's come up this particular year, when we've gone completely virtual, and many other school districts and states have done so. And so, where it comes to completing the FAFSA, or just even getting basic background information regarding the FAFSA, and how to respond to questions, we know that those students who don't have access to technology are going to be disproportionately impacted by this situation. However, GDOE is working, as you know, to provide our all interests, students with access to a computer, and to the internet, internet, through our laptop distribution projects, our partnership with the governor for short-term internet access to families, and then our longer-term initiative to establish community learning centers at many of our schools, which will allow for, you know, students to come to school when they're able to, you know, after this pandemic, a situation, to be able to access Wi-Fi and technology after hours. So, we do hope that eventually the access to technology will benefit all students and not be an obstacle. And then additionally, we know that, as I mentioned before, that focused, individualized counseling support is going to be needed for many students to get through the FAFSA completion process. And I just think that it's very difficult to do in our high schools, where the ratio of counselors to students, I think I misquoted this, where the ratio of students to counselors is high. And so, we want to make sure that, you know, before we launch into this, that we do provide the necessary support to high school counselors, including professional development workshops and other assistance, to ensure that they also are able to assist students and parents effectively. So, despite some of these challenges that I am raising, I am aware that some states, as you mentioned, have begun to make completion of the FAFSA a requirement for graduation. And I know that several states have already passed laws and are working on implementation. You did mention, in the legislation, Louisiana, which looks like they've been pretty successful at raising their FAFSA completion rate above 75%, joined by Tennessee, as another state that's done so, with their students. So, it's a very good conversation to have, and to get 75% of your students to complete the FAFSA, it really opens up a lot of opportunities for our students. So, I do think that it's important to keep, you know, going in that direction. So, I do think it's to the credit of the legislature that you're looking at how to boost FAFSA completion rates here on Guam. Should the legislature decide to move forward with this legislation, I'm not sure what, you know, what the intent is, and whether, and the pace of moving this forward, I would make some immediate suggestions. Number one is just some clarity on the requirements to provide support to parents and guardians. The language was very general, in terms of any support or assistance necessary, so I suggested an amendment to just clarify that what we're really talking about is, you know, assistance for the parents and the students, including workshops, or language translation, or other similar supports to help, you know, parents better understand the requirements of the FAFSA process. The second is relative to the exception for students who are unable to meet the requirement. I think that this is important, that you do recognize, and as you have, that we ought to think about ways to address students who might not, for some good reason, be able, might not be able to fulfill this requirement. So, the waiver authority, though, I would recommend that it be executed at the superintendent's level, in order to assure the proper accountability for any deviation from the public law requirements. So, this is typically how we handle any other waiver of graduation requirements, that within the department, it really goes up to the superintendent from the high school principals, so that we're all aware of when exceptions need to be made to our otherwise general requirements. In executing the authority, of course, I inserted language there to establish a standard operating procedure that could be transparent and available to all seniors and parents, so they understand the terms upon which they might be able to receive this waiver. So, as you can see, I just suggested changes to the language in the bill, that allows the superintendent to authorize a waiver of the requirement based on the following exceptions. One was simply to reiterate that a parent, legal custodian, or a student of majority age, has the option to decline to complete the application, so that was in your bill. Second was, instead of a school counselor, we asked that the high school principal be the one to provide the initial authorization that the student is able to decline. And then the final one would be an overall authority for the superintendent to issue waivers of this requirement for good cause, and the reason, or emergency circumstances. So, the reason I put that in there is that we know that this year, for instance, Louisiana, I believe, has had to waive the FAFSA completion requirement, just due to COVID-19. So, you know, we just wanted to say, maybe in an emergency circumstance, there ought to be some flexibility to determine that it won't impede graduation for those students. So, these are just suggestions for how to flesh out the exemption requirement. And then the other component was really to establish a reasonable implementation date. If you were to allow, or if you were to move forward with the legislation, I would ask that there be at least a full school year to prepare and plan for implementation. So, assuming that the bill would be passed during the current school year, I would recommend that the following language be inserted, to allow the requirement to take effect no earlier than school year 2022, '23. And so, that would give us an opportunity to make sure that we plan accordingly, build the capacity needed, and ensure that when it comes time for the application of this requirement for a graduating class, that the students, parents, and all the relevant partners are aware of the requirement and understand what they need to do to meet that. So, with that said, thank you once again for this opportunity to participate in this discussion. I think it's a great discussion, but should you have any questions or comments, please feel free to let me know directly. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Superintendent. And I'd just like to ask a quick question, as we were talking about school counselors. Is it typical for a high school counselor to assist a student with a FAFSA application?
Yes, school counselors can and do assist with FAFSA applications. I mean, I think the issue is, if you see the nature of the application, it's not really just a matter, I mean, there's certainly a matter of introducing the potential, you know, applicant to the form itself, and to ensure that there's awareness of the FAFSA, and to encourage them, and assist them in trying to fill out that form. But I do think that, when you think about it as a graduation requirement, and you think about completion of the form, the type of assistance necessary is really, it's going to be much more than we currently can provide. It's almost like helping someone with their taxes, especially if you haven't done it before. So, I would assume that we would have to really focus in on what it would exactly take to ensure that a student not just learns about the form, downloads it, or, you know, starts to fill it out online, but to actually be able to source all the necessary information to complete it. That's a real task, and I think that would take a real, you know, effort to ensure that counselors are able to provide that level of support. Definitely, we appreciate the work that UOG and GCC have done in their outreach, because they certainly are able to offer that assistance as well. And I know Mark Duarte, you know, here, he's also helped us with a group of students, just to talk about it, financial aid, and introduce on the FAFSA. So, it is a continued partnership that needs to continue, you know, to continue, but I just think that the level of support, if we're going to make it a requirement, the level of support has to be, you know, raised, in order to meet the expectations to complete the FAFSA forms.
Okay, I understand. Thank you very much. Senator Telo, do you have any questions for the superintendent, before we move on to the rest of the panel?
I'd like, Madam Chair, if I may, listen to everybody's testimony before I have any questions for that. Well, I know, wait, wait, you're leaving, Superintendent, I forgot, you have to go soon. But I greatly appreciate the comments that you made, some of those concerns I've brought up to as well. But I think the most important thing of all is the interaction with the parents, as well as the students, providing this kind of testimony. I see we have heads of these agencies, but we don't really see the, you know, those who are going to be required to fill out this application, and they should be here to testify. I'd really like to see a concerted effort, before the bill even moves further, to hear from those parents, especially the parents, and the students, at least, you know, juniors, seniors, like that. And I agree with you, if anything were to get through, it would be 2023, maybe the graduating class of 2023, or, yeah, we're going into 2021 or '22. But I know that Illinois and Texas has only implemented this law within six months, you know, and Louisiana was the only one, I think they had this five years ago. But we run into problems and situations that there could be a lawsuit, you know, with regards to this. So, I mean, does every student have to sign a contract when they enter into, like kindergarten, you know, where their parents, you know, sign a contract saying that, okay, I'm going through my 12 years, and at the end of the, I expect a diploma? Or, you know, when do they sign that agreement, you know, even if it's by law? There are a lot of implications involved in here, but you touched on a lot of them. So, thank you, Superintendent, for that information, too, that you brought up.
Yeah, I would just add, I mean, it is really important to ensure that students are able to avail themselves of the resources that are out there. And I do worry that many students out there, when they see the initial price tag, they just, you know, it becomes an insurmountable obstacle, you know, just depending on their, not just their family support, but sometimes they're making choices between going to work and supporting my family, or contributing to the family, versus drawing any kind of resources out of the family to go to their education. So, those are real, you know, decisions that kids end up having to make, when they don't learn about what other resources might be available. But again, like you said, there are things to think about, because, you know, if we don't do this correctly, those who are unable to meet the requirements may likely be those who, you know, are going to be more at risk of not completing, you know, their graduation requirements, and face more obstacles. I mean, I just, for the purpose of this hearing, went and updated myself on the most recent FAFSA form, and it is not an easy form to fill out, if you haven't done it before. So, without an adult walking, you know, walking many of these students through this process, and sticking with it, you know, you can see them falling through the cracks, especially those with the least support at home, and maybe whose parents have not gone to college, and so they don't have that support and continued, you know, guidance, it's easier to give up. So, we'd like to figure out how to increase that FAFSA completion rate, and that's definitely a good goal. But I'm happy, and I'm happy also to facilitate, I know the board would as well, any conversation with students as well, because it is right, I'm sure they don't ask for more requirements, but the conversations we've had with students, I think I shared in my testimony, it is really thoughtful. They've tried it, they've gone through it, and they realize that sometimes they run into these obstacles at home, that makes it just difficult to, you know, even if they wanted to complete it, to actually get it done.
Superintendent, one question, though. Are you providing any kind of awareness for the opportunities for graduating students? Is there kind of an outreach program that you have in place for these students to actually fill out any kind of FAFSA, or any grants or opportunities? Is there an outreach?
Yes, we do, and we've been expanding that through our college access supports. So, those might be through our college fairs, where we're introducing our kids to the college opportunities on-island and off-island. We work with the UOG and GCC to welcome their support in school, to talk about, you know, the requirements for college and financial aid requirements. But I have to say, a lot of it is really introductory, raise awareness of what these requirements are, and then, you know, we encourage them to fill these applications out. What's helpful, but not as widely done, just because of the numbers, are workshop-type supports, where counselors hold workshops, where they actually do sit down and begin to work on that FAFSA form. But I do have to tell you, it's, again, it's not an easy form to fill out in one city, so it does require a lot more assistance than just even a workshop might be able to provide. So, but those efforts do take place, so just trying to figure out how we can enhance those efforts as well will be, you know, an important part of this conversation.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Fernandez.
Okay, thank you very much, Senator Titigui. I'd like to also welcome Senator Kelly Marsh Titino, who has joined us. Senator Titino, we're asking our question to the superintendent, he won't be able to stick around for the entire hearing, so if you have a question for him now, it would be your chance.
Senator Massey, and I just want to say that I appreciate the thoughtfulness of the superintendent's testimony, because he hit a lot of nails on the head with the difficulty of the form, and that, you know, we have these digital divides, which has been a real big issue that they're trying to tackle. Amongst the other issues, you know, that can keep a family from being able to...
Okay, I know Senator Titino did tell me a little bit earlier that she was experiencing connection issues, so, there she is.
Yeah, so, I was trying to think, is there any federal program that you know of that can help, like, is there any sort of grant that could help set this up, so that you're able to really get your people well-versed and get these workshops prepared?
Well, we have expanded and used our current federal assistance to expand our college readiness efforts, right? So, really, it's really exposing a lot more students to these college opportunities, including information about what they might need to do relative to taking advantage of financial aid. It's going to take more than that, I guess, is what I'm saying, is that, you know, there is one effort to really, you know, ensure that students see college as an option in the first place. Many students who want to go to the military, want to go to work, don't know what they want to do, that first effort is to say, consider college, consider a two-year, consider a four-year program, and let's show you why that's important, and where there are these opportunities. And then the second piece is, plus, you know, once you see the price tag, we want you to know that financial aid is available. And once you get to that level of the conversation, you really need to go, you know, a lot further, because once they see the ticket price on some of the, you know, on these institutions, you know, and in fact, some of these amounts don't really seem high to those who are familiar with the cost of going to college and grad school, so you've seen them rocket, you know, really, you know, get high in certain institutions. Sometimes you see a reasonable price, but to many of these kids who... to those who are familiar with the cost of going to college and grad school. So you've seen them rocket, you know, really, you know, get high in certain institutions. Sometimes you see a reasonable price, but to many of these kids who don't really understand necessarily uh, what these ticket prices mean and how they should be compared, they don't, they don't realize that they do get a great deal on Guam. And number two, that's that's not only, not only that, there's assistance that's available to help alleviate them of of that full ticket price. So once they see something like, oh, it's $12,000, I can't do that. I don't have $12,000 in the bank. I don't have it in my account. And how am I gonna ask my parents to divert any money away from the rest of our family needs to support my education, you know, when I should be, you know, be ready to ensure that I'm I'm helping out the family with our needs? So it's really this, you know, it's a real basic, um, you know, uh, assessment of of the opportunities. And we have to kind of break through that by saying, hey, you know, there is financial aid out there. The challenge is, when you say, hey, there's financial aid out, or all you have to do is fill out this form, and you show them the FAFSA, it doesn't get easier. It's, you know, now you say climb this little mountain first, and if you can do it by yourself, that's great, but I think, you know, if we really wanna make this successful, you'd have to figure out a way to provide that that real coaching and individualized assistance to make sure not that they don't just start it, but the minute they hit a challenge with a parent, you know, and and again, just, you know, oh, parent needs to get the document, documents from the employers, the employers aren't cooperative, what do they do in that situation? Or they didn't file taxes, so how are they gonna provide tax information? You know, we have really savvy parents, and it's kind of interesting. On the flip side, we have really savvy parents who don't regularly file taxes, but then because they've been through this with other children, file taxes in the year that they need to in order to have that tax information available, plus their tax return to help finance uh, their their child's grad, you know, uh, college-going uh, aspirations. But, you know, again, that's a real different way of approaching it, but some parents have you'll learn uh, that part, but for for others, that's the obstacle. They haven't filed taxes. They don't wanna report on housing. Um, and these are really for those, for students in more challenging circumstances, not every student, but those are the ones I worry about. If we make this a requirement, we have to look at all students in all circumstances to make sure we don't penalize you by not, not only not having you take advantage of financial aid. We're now going to maybe withhold your diploma, and that becomes a very significant step. So I'd like to find ways to really improve, um, you know, the FAFSA completion rate, and I know Dr. Okada and Dr. Christ are here as well, and our board chair uh, with it, with the ideas. And I would like to hear from students as well, because uh, I, again, the the last discussion I had with students was very, was not a matter of, oh, we have extra things to do to go to college. It really was, hey, you know, I'm trying, I tried, but boy, it's really hard to do, you know, in our circumstances with certain issues with parents. I said, well, we really need to take that into consideration before we give them the the burden of having to complete that to graduate. So that's just, that's that's just my thought on, on, you know, how we can move forward.
And and I I appreciate all the detail that you gave, and you know, you addressed some of my concern. Um, part, you know, one of my concerns is, you know, I really worried about those students who maybe in some ways need it the most, maybe uh, have some difficulty with documents or having parents that will attend a workshop. Um, like, I don't know what the correlations are, but I would certainly worry about that part. And it sounded like you were saying that there were some other options, like maybe having some coaches uh, that could sit down and walk these students or these parents through that. Um, and so, yeah, uh, can you speak to that? Um, were you talking about more than just uh, workshops that maybe some individualized attention if they needed?
Well, I do think that if we were going that direction, we probably just need to do more uh, as partners, you know, with UOG and GCC to figure out how we can enhance what we're currently doing right now. Um, again, right now, a lot of it is really raising awareness and just ensuring that students know that there is something called a FAFSA, and that that's that will help you open the door to financial aid. But if we're gonna take them through the completion process and we want to, you know, uh, raise those numbers, we're gonna have to do, there's a lot more work involved. So I'd have to go and assess, you know, the impact that that would have on our counselors right now, because um, I know that they are not doing as much individualized support as would be needed to meet this requirement. Um, so it would be that along with, you know, I'm gonna turn to Dr. Okada and Dr. Christ and ask them, you know, what can, what can we do in partnership? Because they're gonna be coming to you and, you know, how do we hand off to you and make sure they have the necessary information to uh, to be successful in getting to, getting that financial aid, you know, resources, uh, you know, to to them, so. So that's what, that would be the the discussion we'd have to have. You know, I I know that in other jurisdictions, there may be other nonprofits out there who help and provide support, but I'm not sure, you know, if we have that level of support here in Guam.
No, and that's a good way to reach out and see what nonprofits maybe could partner uh, with with something like that. You know, I know we have, and and I I don't know the full breadth of all of our nonprofits, but Manjat Lu is pretty active, and uh, you know, all of these nonprofits are pretty active, so there may be interest in that way. And um, I'll I'll save some of my questions, uh, maybe for incentivization um, for later on. So, so to us, Marcy, Madam Chair, and to Superintendent Fernandez as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Titino. I'd like to state for the record, I know uh, uh, you all were asking about uh, testimonies from students, and we did reach out to the uh, IBOGS uh, student representatives for their testimonies. And so we did receive a testimony from Marina Babalta, who is in support of the bill, uh, from Jim Pamplona, uh, also in support of the bill, and a testimony from Jadrina, Driann Duiko, uh, opposing the bill. So, uh, in the Google Drive for uh, all those in the hearing today, there are uh, additional testimonies, the students who are not with us, but they have provided their written testimony. And we will continue to reach out to uh, our IBOGS members, uh, as well as other students, and leave the uh, testimony period. All right. Uh, now, I'd like to move on to uh, Chair of the Board of Education, Maria Gutierrez.
Uh, thank you, Senator Shelton. Good afternoon, Senator Tello and Senator Mark and everyone that's participating. I'm Maria Gutierrez. I am the co-advisor for the Island Board of Governing Students, better known as IBOX. And uh, I provided this bill for them to uh, present their testimony. So you, when you, um, you receive the three that were, I mean, submitted on their own. Uh, there is no consensus as a whole, the 11 IBOX, because they really need to to study the the bill further, and I agree with the superintendent. I read his testimony. I agree with Senator Tello that there are people here that really needs to be involved before this bill even get passed. And that is this, the interaction of the parents and the students. There's a lot of the students really, they need to educate also their parents, and a lot of their parents don't really know what this is all about. And I, I experienced this when my granddaughter that I I raised, I graduated from St. Paul, and she decided to go off island to attend college in LA. And uh, she had a hard time too, because she had to, uh, she, it's not that she doesn't know to fill it out, but she had to get all the documents from me as her guardian and also uh, her father. So these are some things that we have to really, I ask you to be, don't rush your bill yet, and let's do an outreach to the families, to the parents, to make them understand. And one of the students that uh, messaged me said, Mrs. G, I need, my my parents don't know about this, and if we're going to, like Superintendent said, or the documents, um, do, is is it anybody's business to know that we are on public assistance? So those are information that we need, that we need to educate the 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 stakeholders. And yes, we need, if, you know, that's one thing of this board is that stakeholders are very important on this board. Their input, parents, teachers, students, we value that. And we, we also gave the superintendent a lot of flexibility in any, anything that has to do that with students is operational. And if you're gonna make this a requirement, you know, you need, you need to stop and think about it. Are we gonna have students just dropping out because they don't wanna meet this requirement? We need to be very sensitive, and I agree with your two colleagues here, Senator Shelton. More if, more education, more outreach before we, this bill even go uh, forward. Please can, uh, maybe defer this and do an outreach, you know, go out there and do an outreach to the families uh, to to make them understand, because some kids are, some of the students, like, and I know that you had one opposition. But I, you know, that's the reason why the the IBOX cannot come together on this, because some of them have issues of, especially the documentation. And and I just don't wanna be able to, for them to uh, submit something that they're not satisfied, because they they have their value, also their their parents' uh, sentiment. Are their parents gonna some, give them the document that's needed? And so, as you know, some some families, some people don't file their tax, it just leave, they're gonna be paying, so they be, they waited. They wait, they don't wanna wanna file the tax because they have to pay, but if they're getting a refund, yes, they're gonna, they'll file. So I just ask you senators, please, and also, please don't make it a requirement. Give the superintendent the flexi- flexibility, just like the service learning, we gave him the flexibility to, uh, for student, uh, when it comes to the service learning credits. We gave him the flexibility to decide graduation requirements. And then the parents don't have to come to the board to argue about that, that, um, their child not being graduating, because we get that to superintendent at this level to handle it. So I thank you for that, but uh, you met those, uh, 11 IBOX. So only three have submitted and wanna oppose out of the three, because they still wanna meet and go, they go over the bill and also share it with their parents. So thank you for that, and uh, please do not rush on this bill. There, more education is needed for the stakeholders. Thank you uh, to all of you.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I appreciate those suggestions, as well as the superintendent's suggestions to help uh, strengthen the bill to make it easier for the department to carry out uh, this requirement if we pass it into law. So I I do appreciate that, and I will continue to uh, remain open for testimony from parents and from students and consider an outreach with you. We'll, we'll reach out to you and the board to assist us with that. Thank you very much. And I will move on to President of the Guam Community College, Dr. Mary Okada.
Thank you, Senator Shelton. Hafaday Senator Shelton and members of the Committee on Higher Education and the Advancement of Women, Children, Youth, and Senior Citizens. And special thanks to uh, Senator Tello and Senator Kelly for attending this um, hearing as well. The Guam Community College is in support of Bill 222-35 relative to the requirement of the Guam Public High School seniors to fill out the free application for federal student aid, FAFSA, in order to provide more students with financial aid and provide more financial resources to the University of Guam and the Guam Community College, with some suggestions for modifications. Financial aid funding to the Guam Community College for the past four year, four grant aid years was approximately $22 million. During this time, a duplicated count of 5,855 GCC students applied for and was granted federal financial aid. This means that students may be eligible for multiple years. As the bill indicates, in the past several years, states like Louisiana, Texas, and Illinois have passed legislation that requires high school students to complete FAFSA as a requirement for graduation. Other states are expected to pass similar legislation. In Tennessee, this requirement was for students to avail of the Tennessee Promise Scholarship, which provides free college to his residents. In February 2015, Guam passed the First Generation Trust Fund Initiative, now Public Law 33-07. This allows for all GDOE high school students that graduated in academic year 2018-19 to avail of a one-time scholarship of $500 to attend post-secondary education at the University of Guam or the Guam Community College as a full-time student. The scholarship may be applied towards the cost of registration, enrollment, or tuition. This program will come to an end by the eighth year of its enactment unless new legislation is enacted authorizing continuation. Since 2019, 578 students have benefited from this initiative at GCC. I referenced the First Generation Trust Fund Initiative because there is a connection to what this legislation proposes to achieve. Perhaps one way to increase the number of students entering post-secondary is to require the FAFSA application prior to accessing these funds. This ensures that the time from graduation to actual college enrollment is in alignment with their FAFSA application. To support students and the, to, the support to students and our parent and parents is already an ongoing activity for employees at the college, including vocational guidance counselors in each of the high schools, our reach for college staff, our project aim staff, and academic counselors and other personnel. If the intended outcome for the FAFSA policy is to encourage more students to enroll into post-secondary education, ultimately earning a degree, then our results will be positive. The college has experienced an increase in the 150% graduation rate since 2010, from 8% to 18% in 2014. This is for first-time, full-time, degree-seeking students in the fall semester who graduate within three years if enrolled in an associate's degree program or within one and a half years if enrolled in a certificate program. In addition, the college has seen an increase in the 200% graduation rate since 2010, from 18% to 28% in 2014. This is for first-time, full-time, degree-seeking students in the fall semester who graduated within four years if enrolled in an associate's degree program or within two years if enrolled in a certificate program. In closing, I would also recommend the following. The first is to pilot this initiative instead of pressing forward with legislation. This will allow for us, GDOE, GCC, and UOG to determine the requirements to necessarily, to successfully support and implement this requirement. Two, consider delaying the implementation until after the evaluation of the First Generation Trust is completed in 2022. And the third is, instead of a school counselor, have the principal authorize the student to decline and complete uh, decline to complete and submit the financial aid application for good cause as determined by the principal. And this is because we have vocational guidance uh, counselors in the high schools. We all recognize the value for students to avail of post-secondary education. Many students have shown that, many studies have shown that students need some level of post-secondary education to support a healthy economy. Your continued support for education on Guam is an investment in our people. I applaud you all for your commitment to our students. I thank you for the opportunity to before, to appear before the committee this afternoon and testify in favor of Bill 222-35.
Thank you very much, President Okada. I will move on to President of the University of Guam, Dr. Thomas Christ.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Senators, for um, thinking of this and um, and holding this hearing. Um, I would endorse uh, Superintendent Fernandez's recommendations and President Okada's recommendations, and I think what's common to them is the idea of being, um, ensuring that we're prepared um, to implement this and that we have enough support to 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 make it do what, uh, to make it do the good things that uh, that we want it to do. So I think that's important um, to to reiterate, and I'll be yielding to um, to the Director of our Student Financial Aid, um, Mark Duarte, who's really expert on this subject, and he can elaborate. I think in our written testimony, we recommended uh, starting no sooner than the year 2022, and the superintendent recommended the academic year 2223, so uh, and also the recommendation of having a pilot and some workshops and, you know, to make sure that we've got the support for this. But the basic idea is really, really smart, that we've got resources out there that students can access to be able to get uh, education and training beyond uh, high school. More and more and more people need to have something past high school, and so everything we can do to to help them get there um, is really worthwhile. And I'd also like to call attention to the federal work studies, also a benefit that comes from, you know, doing this heavy-duty work of doing a FAFSA, and that work study is a terrific um, uh, additional financial help for students, and it's worth paying attention to that even for students who don't uh, get a Pell Grant. And at the university, we're nearly half, I think, last I noticed, it was 47% of our students are on on some form of the Pell Grant. So it's really important to the success of the, of UOG, to the success of our students uh, to get this. I anticipate with the new administration in DC, there's, you know, a reasonable chance that the Pell will be ex, uh, in in increase, perhaps, I mean, they've been talking doubling, but uh, but increasing that, so it'd be even more advantageous for our students to get that, uh, get those resources. And it's better for all of us. If we can get more of those resources into Guam, keep them here, take full advantage of them. Our students who get the additional education and training will get better jobs, the the industries will be better off, new things, will be able to do new things, will generate more tax revenue. So these are, all of these ways of helping these students um, get post-high school education and So these are, all of these ways of helping these students um, get post-high school education and training. Is worthwhile to all of us on so many different levels. So this is uh, exactly right, I think, to be pursuing this. But we wanna make sure we do it uh, as carefully as possible to make sure that it accomplishes all the good things that we want it to do. So thank you, Madam Chair and Honorable Senators for letting me speak and I will um, depend on Mark Duarte for his expertise.
Thank you very much, Dr. Christ. Uh, Mr. Duarte?
Hi, good afternoon. Uh, my name is Mark Duarte. I'm the Director of Financial Aid at University of Guam. You know, in, in support of uh, Bill two twenty-two. Our, our, from our standpoint, what we're seeing is um, students often, especially students from Guam. Uh, you know, don't, don't have a uh, plan for financing their education rather than high, uh, high school. When we do these presentations at um, at the high schools, you know, we ask questions like um, how many of you have saved up for college? And maybe one or two um, students raise their hands. But those folks already have plans to attend college elsewhere. And um, you know, they know how to do the FAFSA, but those are not the students that we're really um, looking at. Uh, I, I understand um, you know, the difficulty in filling out the FAFSA. But the, the benefits um, uh, of not filling out the FAFSA, especially for, for those students who are. Um, really at risk, uh, is, is the Pell Grant of six thousand three hundred ninety-five. And could increase with the incoming administration. Student loans, that was a part of financial aid, work study as mentioned by uh, President Christ. And additional uh, other financial aid, all that uh, cannot be accessed without um, filling out the, the FAFSA. The, the concern that we've had, and this is really um, you know, a, a good step forward. But our concern, just like um, Superintendent Fernandez is, how? To, to ensure that we don't burden our um, high school counselors. And, and in turn also, I'm looking um, at my um, office as well as GCC. And when we do our outreach to the university or to the high schools. You would imagine an increase of the kind of workshops uh, to accommodate uh, the law. So, asking for um, maybe two, uh, two thousand twenty-two or twenty-three. To uh, have this law in place will give us the chance to um, speak with the DOE. Uh, about some of the workshops, some of the training that we would have to um, coordinate with our, our high school partners. To ensure that we can um, uh, you know, in, ensure that students have the necessary help. To fill out the, the FAFSA. I also understand um, the chairwoman's, um, the board chair's uh, um, concern about. Difficulty in filling up the FAFSA. You know, the FAFSA itself, I just looked at uh, one student's um, student aid report. There's a hundred and two items on that uh, um, FAFSA. Anywhere from, a- and one critical mistake and one of the questions, things like. Uh, will you be working on a first bachelor's degree? You know, for folks that have been in education, that seems like a pretty uh, simple question. But sometimes that, uh, answering their question wrong can make the student ineligible for financial aid. So a lot of education will be needed um, prior to us actually making this outreach to um, to our students. So while, you know, I think it is a very good um, start and we support it. There is that discussion that needs to happen with, with students, with parents. Um, before uh, we can implement this. But I, I think it would be a disservice if we, we don't um, uh. At least to bring this up to our, to our parents who are looking desperately to help their students. And their kids go to school, but may not have um, uh, you know, financial support. Uh, especially these days with uh, COVID. More and more people have uh, no income. Um, so we expect a rise in number of uh, FAFSA submissions. Uh, the other technical things about the FAFSA that may help um, in deciding uh, this legislation is that. When, when you're filing the FAFSA, the, the tax form that, that we use, you're using your prior year tax form. So the twenty-one, twenty-two tax, um, FAFSA, for example, you're using your twenty-nineteen uh, taxes. So you, there is a year, um, uh, I guess leeway for, for parents to file their taxes. So they're not using immediate taxes. So that's one. Uh, the other is that the FAFSA itself opens uh, October first, the year prior to the start of the academic year. So the twenty-one um, academic year, uh, FAFSA actually just opened up um. A couple of months ago. So this lead time um, allows us to. You know, have more time to go out, to, to the public, to our, to our students and educate them on, on the process. So while it is, I, I think it's very daunting and um, I think uh, our high school counselors. And, and teachers uh, would need a, a longer lead time along with some coordination with UOG and GCC. I think it will be very beneficial for students. Unfortunately, the, the ones that need the most help will be the ones that will have the most problems filling out the FAFSA. Things like um, looking for tax uh, documents. Even now, we have our students, um, you know, we can't award them financial aid because they are um, chosen for a process called verification. And it's that point where they can't find their tax returns, they can't find W twos. And unfortunately, uh, under federal regulations, we can't award them financial aid. So technical, technical things that are, are really are obstacles in, in giving those uh, financial aid needs to be addressed. To make this uh, really successful. But at the very least, I think um, even the opting out of the FAFSA. Will at least start the conversation with um, counseling offices, um, with teachers, with students. And I think that's a good thing. So that, that's my basic oral testimony. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Duarte. Um, I, I just have one question for you, sir. I know uh, President Okada did mention some type of outreach that the Guam Community College does to our high school students. Where uh, they go out and they assist uh, with uh, enrolling at the college and with these types of forums. Does the University of Guam also have uh, this kind of outreach with high school students?
Uh, yes, uh, before um, the lockdown, uh, we actually had a hands-on. Uh, workshop at Teasen High School where we went to a, um, a class. With uh, computers and we told the students in advance what documents they would need to bring. They can bring their parents to the session and we sat down with them and went through the, the FAFSA. From beginning to submission. So that was pretty successful and um, we had plans to extend that. Uh, in, in, early, earlier this year, but of course uh, for lockdown. But if um, once we open up again, we intend to bring that program to other schools. And we had JFK lined up as well as Okadu High School um, for that kind of workshop. And we find that that kind of workshop works best, rather than just doing a PowerPoint on, this is FAFSA, this is what you do. We actually have to sit them down in front of com- of a computer with their documents and kind of work them through from beginning to end. Uh, you know, it, it lasts about an hour or, or more, depending on whether the student has the documents. But the good thing about these um, electronic FAFSA is that you can save them, can come back to it later. Uh, you don't have to do it all in one setting. So, but technical issues really is, is what's preventing um, most students from, from completing.
I see. Thank you very much, Mr. Duarte. I'll open the floor up for questions from my colleagues. However, I'd just like to ask that you please uh, limit your questions because we still have one bill. And then Senator Kelly also has a hearing at five o'clock, so uh, I don't want to cut into her time. So uh, go ahead, Senator Tello.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, you know me, I'm, I'm usually very straightforward, blunt and. No talking. Anyways, uh, it's sorry, it's been a long day. Um, I think earlier I said five years Louisiana, but actually it's been three years um, that Louisiana's had this uh, legislation. Um, I think I, most of it, uh, questions were asked with the superintendent. I mean, this is where you, you're starting. This is the root where it began, you know, the students and in high school. So a, a lot of the questions um, I had were, were given to him. But there is one, you know, with this, with the legislation, and I'm not sure if um, GCC or UOG. Uh, has any to do, do with this, so I'll just make a comment and, uh, end it from there. When the application is filled out, a, a student would fill out the, the FAFSA application. Um, is it given to the, to the high school for them to review? Or is it just put in an envelope and, and sent directly, you know, um, off island, you know, to be mailed out? Because a concern is i- if uh, you know, principals or school counselors or aides are, is privy to a lot of that information. So um, I've tried to look in the bill to see if there's anything. So maybe there's a standard way of doing it, an SOP with uh, um, like they do in Louisiana or Texas or something like that. But um, would you happen to know that? Um, Madam Chair?
Yes, uh, Senator Titigui. Uh, actually, the uh, the FAFSA form is done by the student and parent directly uh, online. So it's, it doesn't go through the school. It's all done by the student. Their information is not shared with the high school.
Okay, thank you. Other than that, um, I appreciate everyone being here and providing your testimony. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Senator Titino?
Well, the uh, the testimony is pretty thorough and I really appreciate that from in, each of the institutions. And I know who, we're on a time crunch, so um, I'll just note that and, and thank everybody for their thoroughness. Uh, in really trying to make this a successful program by providing uh, students the support they need. And uh, the, the.
Thank you very much, Senator Titino, and I'd like to thank everyone who's joined us for the hearing on Bill two-two-two dash thirty-five. Sidoismasi uh, to UOG, GCC and DOE. Uh, I appreciate all of the testimony, the comments and suggestions today and we will be in touch. Okay, now we will move on uh, to the next bill on our agenda. Let me just pull it up, I'm sorry. This is Bill four-one-six dash thirty-five and this was introduced uh, by myself. Along with the Chair of the Committee on Housing, Senator Joe Estenagustine and Speaker Tina Rose Munia Barnes. And this is an act to add a new Article thirteen to Chapter two of Division one, Title ten. Guam Code Annotated Relative to the Establishment of the Senior Citizens Housing Task Force Act of two thousand and twenty. This bill was introduced in October uh, to provide affordable housing and assisted living options. To our island's Menamco. Uh, the bill will establish the Senior Housing Task Force. Charged with assessing senior housing availability and needs and establishing recommendations for the development. Of senior housing and assisted living facilities on Guam. The bill provides for the creation of a seven, seven-member task force made up of government and community stakeholders. And housing experts to develop long-term solutions for Guam's aging population. I'd like to uh, thank those who have joined us today. I see uh, Ms. Charlene Siniklis from the Department of Public Health and Social Services Division on Senior Citizens. I see um, Mr. Carlos Camacho. Uh, and Ms. Alice Tyrone from the Guam Housing Corporation. So thank you everyone for being here today. Uh, we'll go right into the uh, testimonies and I'll just go in the order of those uh, that I saw who signed in. Uh, so that first will be uh, Ms. Charlene Siniklis. If you can please state your name and your title for the record before you begin.
Okay, I'm Charlene Siniklis. I'm the Acting Senior Citizens Administrator with the Division of Senior Citizens. Of the Department of Public Health and Social Services. Um, I'll go ahead and uh, provide uh, the oral testimony. I know our Director's uh, Estenagustine does send his regards. He does have a COVID nineteen meeting. So he asked me to go ahead and uh, if I may use this time and go ahead and read out the support, the written testimony that was submitted.
Yes, Senator, thank you.
So this is uh, on behalf of the Department of Public Health and Social Services from our Director Estenagustine. The Department of Public Health and Social Services supports Bill four-one-six dash thirty-five. Creating Senior Citizens Housing Task Force and its proposed membership. Subject to two additional members being added to the task force for a total of nine members as follows. The Chairperson of the Committee on Senior Citizens or Designee. The Department of Public Health and Social Services Division of Senior Citizens Administrator Designee. A member of the Guam Council on Senior Citizens. The Executive Director of the Guam Housing Corporation or Designee. The Executive Director of the Guam Housing and Urban Renewal Authority or Designee. A member of the general public appointed by the Speaker of the Legislature, Illegis legislature in Guahan. And a member of the Guam Realtors Association, who shall be appointed by Maga La, Magahagan, Guahan. The two additional representatives to be added to the task force include uh, the first being a representative. From the Guam Developmental Disabilities Council to be included in the appointment to the task force. As this body supports policy development and advocacy for change to support the infrastructure of support systems. For persons with disabilities, seniors with a disability. And the second to be from the Guam Economic Development Authority or Designee. As this agency can provide the technical assistance in the economic aspect and opportunities of the workforce before the task force. With the various subject matter experts, through its full membership, the task force will be able to develop. And identify various housing needs of seniors to include assisted living and the funding options. That could be provided for the ideas and sketches, the blueprint of Guam's senior residential community to be a reality. In years past, the Division of Senior Citizens surveyed key stakeholders and seniors as to what they would like to see in their senior community. It was apparent they wanted to live in a setting that promoted independence while knowing there was the option to request for support. On days that such support was needed. The vision, uh, visioning exercise resulted in some of the following features. A bank or scheduled banking days via mobile banking, pharmacy or pharmacy services. Dining area for congregant dining and the option to dine in their rooms, walkways, outdoors, areas to exercise. Convenience store and on-call or scheduled transportation services for appointments, medical and non-medical. Basically, they envision a self-contained community that would provide them support to include accessing services beyond their residential setting. As they needed and wanted to. Although the provision states that funding can be requested off the legislature, no amount is identified in this proposed measure. Therefore, it is our rec- our recommendation that uh, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars be appropriated. As seed funding for the task force to work with as they would need to publish notification of their meetings in, in papers. Of general circulation uh, will, will be needed to acquire equipment for teleconferencing. Open an account for teleconferencing or similar technology. The ability to hire a project lead, conduct surveying and public input sessions of vested members. And key stakeholders and other operational administrative expenses. For the appropriate funds uh, remaining uh, to be available for the period of twelve months. The task force does their work up to the report being submitted to the Governor of Guam and the Guam Legislature. Also, it is recommended the task force submit a financial report accounting for funds appropriated, allocated, expended and the remaining balance. As to quarterly reports being filed with the legislature, it is our recommendation the report be posted at each task force member's agency website. As part of the creation of the Division of Senior Citizens within the Department of Public Health and Social Services. There also is the creation of the Guam Council on Senior Citizens, which is ten GCA, Chapter eight, Section eight-one-oh-five. And Section eight-one-zero-six uh, with the council powers that state the council shall serve as the senior citizens housing board. And in this capacity, shall undertake the following. To make or cause to be made feasibility studies regarding the size, cost, site, financing and planning. For the proposed construction of senior citizens homes, uh, two, to select an appropriate site for senior citizens homes. Two, to select an appropriate site for senior citizens' homes. Three, to prepare costs to be prepared, preliminary plans for the construction of senior citizens' homes. And four, to engage architects, engineers, contractors, subcontractors, clerical and other technical assistants necessary to carry out these purposes and enter into any and all agreements necessary to carry out these purposes. The measure provides for membership from the Guam Council and senior citizens on the task force, clearly demonstrating the intent of the measure to have the council maintain a role in the work ahead and the development of housing options for senior citizens. The department views this measure as supportive, as supporting the work of the Guam Council and senior citizens. And it is therefore our recommendation that the measure be written in conjunction with, in support of, and an extension of the work of the Guam Council and senior citizens specific to their senior citizens' housing board. So thank you for the opportunity to provide this testimony and support of the creation of the Senior Citizens Housing Task Force.
Thank you very much, Ms. Siniklis, for that testimony on behalf of Director Arthur Esten Augustin at the Department of Public Health and Social Services. I really appreciate the suggestions for inclusion to help us build an even stronger task force. Thank you very much. We'll move now to Ms. Alice Tyron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do not have anything formal to submit. I applaud your work and your willingness to bring this forth, and I look forward to serving in my capacity for as long as I can and for undo as much as I can. It's a very important topic and I look forward to, to what we're going to do. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Tyron. I really appreciate that, your commitment and your willingness to be a part of this task force. Something that I didn't get to mention at the very beginning was just the idea of what kind of assisted living options there are provided in other communities across the country. I think Shar touched on this a little bit, that seniors are looking for something to be allowed independence in their living, but to also feel safe. And there are different levels of care that can be provided through independent living, through assisted living facilities, through a skilled nursing facility that we're familiar with at St. Dominique, as well as a continuous care retirement community, which is kind of the combination of all of these different levels. So the possibilities really seem to be endless for what we could provide here on Guam. And a task force such as this can help us get the ball rolling. And with that, I'd like to introduce Mr. Camacho for your testimony.
Hey, Jeremy. Hi, Senators, Madam Chair. Thank you for inviting me on this topic in regards to elderly housing. I have nothing in written testimony, but I do want to share my, I guess, my experiences in regards to many federal programs and existing legislative policies that's in the books that probably, a lot of you guys probably are probably not familiar with because it's, that's been in the books for over 20 some years. And it's, it takes these type of stuff to reopen these policies. So 24th Legislature, 35, 11, that's 22 years ago. So when I was reading your bill, the seven plus the two more potential members, I'm glad they're including Gida in there because there are these policies that Gida does oversee. And I just want to share this for the record because whoever that task force may be, hopefully they take these notes and minutes and add this to their toolbox that they'll create in regards to these resources to provide senior housing for Guam. Let it be to independent, let it be to assisted, and let it be to a combination of both. But I want to make it very clear that these programs also, as I discussed, are tied to income categories. So we want to make sure that when we implement these programs, we know that it's targeting certain income limits. But the senior population, there may be some there that are in the higher limits. So we want to make sure we don't forget these guys because these are the people that also want that independent living. I remember when I first did my first senior housing program, almost 15 years ago. I'm not going to describe that today. I still remember former Senator Pilar Lohan came up to me, goes, "Son, I live in a two-story house. How do I, I want to get to a smaller home." And unfortunately, the programs I was promoting were HUD-driven, which are income limits, so she didn't qualify. But today, after 15 years later, I was able to at least put a lot of toolboxes and resources together that I'll share today. So for the record, there are a lot of programs that already exist, and I'm glad you got some of these members that's already sitting there potentially in this task force. And some of the financial resources is through, through the IRS. One of them is called the Low Income Housing Tax Credit. You guys know me as the Ironwood Developer, and you got another group in Guam called the Summer Home Developer, which is Core Tech, Mr. Ho. That's, that's focusing on people's income at 60% air median income and below. Well, what can be done there if you guys want, and I'm glad Gura's a board, I mean, a potential member here, is they could set aside from that annual tax credit that the IRS sets aside, a percentage of that to whoever that developer may be who wins that award every year and say, X percent will be set aside for senior independent living. That's done in the United States and this model works. So that's one way to increase the inventory, and that's funded directly with the IRS tax credit program. And I remember Doris Brooks asked me that question when I first introduced that tax credit in 2005. Would that hurt our tax base on Guam? I just want to make it clear for those senators who are not familiar with the Low Income Housing Tax Credit. It does not hurt the tax base in Guam. These are offset of IRS taxes abroad. These are corporate America that's investing based on Congressional 1986 Tax Reform Act to invest in affordable housing. And seniors could be placed in there as one of the prerequisites if that agency decide to put that as one of their top points scoring method. So that's one. Now, on the tax credit, there's two parts. There's the 9% tax credit, which is the competitive portion. That's, that's the one we compete everywhere, and that's overseen by Gura. And there's the called the 4% tax credit, that's overseen by Gida. So I'm glad Gida's involved here. And that is the one that's underutilized in Guam. That is a non-competitive process, the 4% tax credit. That is offset by the IRS taxes also, but that needs to go and apply through Gida. And once we get an award through there, that got to get legislative concurrence approval. That's the process for the 4% tax credit. And again, when that ever happens, at the 36th Legislature, you guys will probably, the new senators at that point will probably ask the question, would that hit our tax base in Guam? And I'll say for the record now it won't, but I'll wait till the 36th. If someone does apply, then we can answer that question on the 36th Legislature. So that's one program that's available, the 9% and the 4%, that's already available since 1985. Today, the 9% that yielded close to 1,000 units in Guam. You guys seen the Ironwood Communities, you've seen the Summer Home Communities. And in CNMI, you've seen it all over CNMI. I introduced that in CNMI in 2017, and now they've got over 500 units there and different people using it and that. So that's a very successful vehicle. And for you, the legislature who's not familiar with this, if you remember the ladder housing that was a government-driven subdivision under Guam Housing Corporation, while that one, for 20 years on the homeowner's side did not work, it took the Low Income Housing Tax Credit to finally fulfill a 399-unit development there. And for the record, they are senior housing there set aside under HUD called the HAP contract. So there's already some senior programs, again, income-driven. So that's one program that's available. Under HUD, there's also called a Section 202 Rent-to-Assistance. Guam is used, hasn't used that yet to its fullest extent, but that, those are resources. Hopefully, this committee and task force will use as a toolbox and make it available for any endeavor, any intrupenor, any developer to do, to use it. And those are under HUD. Then you got the RAD. RAD is called Rental Assistance Program, again, under HUD. This takes existing public housing that's in the inventory, and it all depends on the Guam Housing Board, I mean, the Gura Board and its management. If they want to convert some of those assets into senior housing, that's up to them. That's federally funded also. That's called RAD. And RAD has been very successful the last three years. Guam just has to implement it if they want to. Finally, for those that don't meet those income limits, in Honolulu and in California, they call it the ADU, Accessories Dwelling Unit. What happens here, it's even, what a perfect timing, especially when peoples are getting reduced hours in their, in their income. A lot of people can, you know, their home mortgages are high. So in Hawaii, because the cost is high, like in California, the Senate there, the legislature passed called the ADU Program, Accessories Dwelling Unit. And what that does, you actually see it in Guam actually, but it's all, we all call, we call it in Guam in the definition of the land use planning called non-conforming residence, where you see a lot of homes extend to the back of their home. You know, you see that all over Deado. It's because people cannot afford other houses, so they expand their home. But truly, they're, they're expanding it in non-conformance to the zoning laws of Guam. But in Hawaii, in the States, they call it ADU. And for the next 36th Legislature, if they want, they can research the ADU program. I got the bill, I got this, I got the laws that they use, and I'm not a bill writer. I can send it to this committee and whoever's aggressive in 36th, if they want to introduce it, if they think it's worthwhile for all these existing homes in Guam to build ADU units behind their homes for, for the elderly, and especially with our culture, maybe the elderly would like to stay still within their footprint of their home, but at least it will be a conforming resident as one of the resources. And again, those are just ideas I'm sharing. And one final one, I'm glad Gida's there, is in the 24th Legislature, good old Tony Lamorena, the host of the Cape 27, introduced the Affordable Housing QC Law. I saw you guys pass some QC bills today in the legislature. Well, there's a QC law in affordable housing. Unfortunately, it sat dormant. It sat there and only one company in Guam choosing it. I'm not going to say who, the very smart company. But that's a law that could be amended and add senior housing to that. Because right now, that's just the affordable housing for homeownership. But if you guys want, since you're creating this government policy task force, you could create a, amend that QC to add a senior housing component to it. And my final one in other states in Hawaii is a lot of large developers that's building subdivisions, they always do what we call a set aside. And I don't mind doing a set aside. If we're going out to make the big bucks in the development, there's a set aside, and that's, that's where you amend that QC law. When you set aside a percentage of your revenue, the same way you guys doing called the QC grants right now, the one that Gida's overseeing from all the QC holders and the grants come back in, you can do call a QC set aside for senior housing. So I'm just sharing all these resources and tools that are available. Hopefully, your task force can put it together in a toolbox and then let the intrupinors out there go out and apply for these programs. For sure, I cannot be a member of the task force because I'll definitely be one of them applying for it as well. So that way I don't conflict myself. So that's my educational testimony to you guys. Hopefully, if there's any questions, I can answer.
Thanks so much, Carlos, for giving us all of those different options that we have, programs that we're learning so much about right now that are available to us at this time that hopefully, members of this task force will be able to really optimize in, in making these plans happen. So I appreciate all of that. Senator Titigui, we have about five minutes left. If you'd like to ask one question from our, for our panel, and then we'll close up.
Well, thank you, everybody, for being here. Alice, you have two titles, don't you? Deputy Chief of Staff as well, multitask woman there and a very hard, hard worker. So I wanted to bring that to light that, well, you know, women are very good at multitasking. But anyways, you know, I've been a advocate for, you know, finding additional homes for our senior citizens as it's growing immensely. The baby boomers are coming into play right now, and it is very difficult with the lack of facilities here. I've been a advocate on, on actually just restructuring and rebuilding the one in two mine with regards to, you know, we can build up on that or even lease out that property to gain revenue and, and build a bigger facility for our senior citizens with all the amenities to it. And we're talking assisted living facilities, which incorporates not only that, but healthcare, mobility. We're talking about not just like stores inside there to give them a little more sense of independence, you know, for that. But the bill, Carlos, you read the bill, and there's a section in there I'm kind of concerned because you've been down this road many times before and even probably been part of task force. But in the bill, it says the term that says summarizing and identifying rather than some, it's not very clear, but would you recommend maybe changing the section that says the task force shall develop recommendations summarizing the best path for, towards identifying strategy, strategies and incorporating, creating a plan? Because it's unclear about summarizing and identifying rather than just creating a plan. What, what is your perspective on that with the task force at hand with its implementation?
I, thank you, Senator. I, again, I'm not legally or on the correct language on what needs to be done. The spirit of the bill is great, and the spirit of what you discuss is great on elderly housing. I hope that the policymakers like you and them will, if the verbiage has to be amended to make sure that what, you know, things like I discussed, things like Public Law 24266, the one I just disclosed, does the task force, can they make the recommendation as you, as you described? I'm not sure what their limits are. Can they make recommendation to the legislative body? Or do they, are they allowed to write legislative policy amendments to the body so that they, you know, that we can encourage the amendment of that Affordable Housing QC Law? So that, that there is a percentage of elderly housing. So that, that description, I, you know, I watch a lot of discussion and I know sometimes the may and the shall changes a whole sentence, right? So I, to be honest, I, I didn't really go into how you'd describe it to see, to get the end result. But I figure, I've seen you guys substitute version and amended version. So hopefully you guys will put a win-win for all you guys and amend.
Okay, thank you, Carlos, for that. So maybe I just, you know, bring it up for the record, you know, to show those sections in the bill, the summarizing and identifying rather than just implementing the word creating a plan because that is the whole purpose and right the intent of it. So it's something to look into. Because of the lack of time, Madam Chair, I'm sure that we'll be able to find out some additional information maybe later on to be sent. And one is the, what are, what is the waiting? Is there a waiting list right now for homes for senior citizen? What's the inventory that Gura has for senior citizens? What about the, is there any federal funding opportunities to help create new construction for housing units to expand these facilities? Those questions like that, Madam Chair, I think is very important. Maybe if we can get that later on, or, you know, I really appreciate that. But for the sake of time, I'll just go ahead and close, and thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you very much, Senator Titigui, and thank you for the questions. I'll work to get those answers. And I do see that we have the head of Gura here, Mr. Tepasna, who's just joined us. And sir, I'd like to offer you just a couple of minutes because there is another hearing waiting. If you could summarize your testimony really quickly and hopefully we can get a written testimony that's more extensive from you in the next couple of days.
Yes, and thank you, Senator. And my apologies for zooming in late. I look, I don't have any testimony right now, but I do look forward to be part of this committee if, if this is, if that is the desire of the legislature. As you know, and Carlos, you know, I just listened to some of the things that Carlos talked about. And Carlos has a history of a lot of the things that have gone on in the past where Gura has been involved. And, but you know, if I can just add that we have had multiple discussions with HUD in terms of trying to pursue different options that are available. trying to pursue different uh options that are available to grow through uh through our repositioning efforts that would include um having to uh revisit the, the use of our public housing pro- uh units. We have seven hundred fifty public housing from uh from Deadito down to Maritza, and uh many of them are aging, uh forty years old to fifty years old, and um and HUD would, would, would want us to undergo some kind of um transition from public housing to section eight. And ideally, that's what has been happening in Hawaii and in, in other similar jurisdictions. So that's something that, uh you know, I wanna bring to the table when we do get uh it, once this uh task force is created. Uh but, you know, one of the things too that I've been really a, a proponent of, and I, I really wish this legislature would support me on this and the administration is is Gura's sitting on assets that are worth tens of millions of dollars, maybe even more. I mean, we're the only housing authority in the entire nation that has property that uh i- in HUD's words, uh you know, i- it's a gold mine. We have Guma Tranquillidad that currently houses forty-nine residents. And the highest and best use really is not, i- is to, to try and do more with that so that we can help the thousands that are on our, currently on our waitlist. Co- collectively, Gura has about four thousand uh seven hundred plus on our waitlist. I, I don't have the breakdown right now to tell you how many of them are Manamku, but I would venture to say that hundreds of them are, are senior citizens. But, you know, we, we house four thousand eight hundred eighty-two families collectively between Guma Tranquillidad, public housing, section eight, and our Lytec projects, of which Carlos is involved. But we have four thousand seven hundred plus on our waitlist. So uh I mean, that, that says a lot. So a lot of people out there need help, not just Manamku, but uh, you know, I, I look forward to be, being part of this task force if, if that is the desire of the legislature, because I think, you know, i- it's time that we sit down and figure out how we can help uh and help hundreds and, or thousands more.
Uh absolutely, Mr. Tapasta. I'm definitely open to that conversation. Um and uh I know that you said you don't specifically have the waitlist for seniors who are waiting for a, a home with Gura, but is there a, a separate waitlist for the Guma Tranquillidad homes?
Uh yes, there is. Uh there's a separate, I believe, the last number I heard, there were like only uh thirty, thirty-six, I believe, uh remaining on the waitlist.
Oh, wow. Okay, that, that seems to have gone down quite a bit, so uh that's, that's good to hear. And I appreciate your testimony here today. I know there were some questions from my colleagues that maybe we can give to you in writing to include in your testimony to help us uh fill out the committee report uh with more information. So I, I really do appreciate your time uh as well as uh the time from the Division of Senior Citizens, uh the time from the Guam Housing Corporation and uh Mr. Camacho, your time as well as a expert in housing. I look forward to uh to discussing this bill further with all of you, and uh hopefully we get it passed in, in this next legislative session so that we can uh see it happen, and we can do some good work for our seniors and hopefully uh help uh the housing situation along for everyone in our community. With uh, with that, I'd like to um, I'd like to uh complete this hearing on uh on the bill. Uh this is Bill four one six dash thirty-five, and my office will still uh accept testimony for the next couple of days. Uh the testimony can be sent to the Office of Senator Shelton at GuamLegislature.org or can be dropped here to the Guam Congress Building. Um and uh there will be replays of this uh, of this hearing on our YouTube channel, and uh it may at some point a replay on our television uh channel for those who, who would like to view it. And with that, Sidhuus Masi and to my colleague Senator Kelly Marsh Taitino, I apologize for cutting into your hearing time this evening, uh but I really appreciate you allowing me to finish today. Uh thank you very much, everyone, and thank you to Senator Telo Taidigui for joining us uh today. Sidhuus Masi and be safe, everyone. Uh if we don't see you before the holidays, happy holidays to you, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. Take care.
Thank you.
And the time, for the record, the time now.